Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Rutherford County Board of Education meeting, July 22nd. First call to business would be the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Jim Estes, board member.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, not a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
You're welcome.
If you would, join me in a moment of solace, please. All right. Approval of the consent agenda, approval of the agenda, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Any questions on the consent agenda? All right. Here and done. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Do we have a second? Mr. Estes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number six is visitors, and we do have a visitor. Pam Corbella.
Chairman and board members, I wanted to thank you for all that you guys do. We appreciate your commitment to the children in our school systems. And I'd like to give a special thanks to Teresa Knox, the lady at the front desk. And she was very helpful to me yesterday, and I wanted to also recommend she get a raise.
Glad to hear that.
For the record, I'm here to tell you that just a few points that I'd like to make. That number one, the meeting being set at 5:00 is early. Most of the parents are working and can't make it here. I'd like to ask that it be changed to 6:00. We have a mother right here in this meeting today that had to take off work to be here today. Secondly, I'd like to say that I don't want our youth being taught that America is a racist country, because it is not a racist country. Number three, I would, I would like, or rather, I want any sexual content to be taught at home by the parents, not by teachers whose philosophy I don't know of. And number four is, I don't want the taxpayers' money to be spent on giving our children sexual paraphernalia. I am in, I'm against the children being forced to be vaccinated, and I'm in favor of charter schools. I listened to the, all the financials, and I know that's a responsibility. I realize too that Rockville came in 3 million under budget, so perhaps that money could be used. And also, it's my understanding that the PPP is a forgivable loan. It's something that I've been told that is forgivable. So, those are all the things that I have to say. I just wanted to bring them to your attention and tell you how I feel about them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Recognition, we did that last night. So, moving on to number eight.
All right, number eight is naming of the Riverdale High School Fieldhouse. Right on tab two, Riverdale High School would like to honor former principal and Rutherford County Schools Director, Eulen Watson, by naming their newest facility, the Eulen Watson Football Fieldhouse. Mr. Watson was inducted into the first Riverdale High School Football Hall of Fame for being credited with the development of the Riverdale football into an annual championship contender. Motion to approve naming the Riverdale High School's Football Fieldhouse after former principal and Rutherford County Schools Director, Eulen Watson, as the Eulen Watson Football Fieldhouse.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Do we have a motion?
I would like to wholeheartedly make this motion that we do this.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Seconded by Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number nine.
All right, number nine is legal, found on tab three, YMCA contract renewal. The YMCA is requesting the renewal of agreement with RCS to continue before and after school fund company programs. The YMCA has extended its standing discounts for our employees. The YMCA will pay $2 per week per child based on the average number of children in attendance each week. This agreement would run until July 1st of 2025. Recommend motion to approve YMCA fund company contract renewal as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Do we have a second? Ms. Johnson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10.
Number two.
All right, number two, policy adoption, first and final reading. If it was okay with the board, we could go through the numbers and perhaps the name of the policy without reading the rest of the language that we read last night.
I think we're all fine with that.
All right. A, policy 1.8011, emergency closings. B, policy 3.205, security. C, policy 4.301, interscholastic athletics. D, policy 4.605, graduation requirements. E, policy 5.106, application and employment. F, policy 5.117, teacher tenure. G, policy 5.802, qualifications and duties of director of schools. H, policy 6.200, attendance. I, policy 6.402, physical examinations and immunizations. J, policy 3.220, access to private facilities. K, policy 4.101, instructional standards. And before we go to L, if you could clear up some things there, Ms. Page.
Absolutely. We had a member of the public come up yesterday and point out something, well, I ended up learning something pretty interesting about this policy. I still think it is fine how it is. However, there were two similar bills this legislative session that ran on the issue of whether a school system should have a family life curriculum policy that's specific. The standing rule was that there was a certain set percentage, the current law that was passed in 2012. If you have a certain percentage of teen pregnancy rate, you needed to have that sort of policy on the books. If you didn't, you didn't have to have one. This legislative session, two different bills were run in an effort to make a modification to this section. One still required it, the specific policy that applied to certain districts with a certain teen pregnancy rate, and one eliminated the need to have a specific rate and asked every district to have the policy. When you look at the bill, those two bills that went through the legislative session, one failed and one was passed, all right? Public Chapter 290 is what ultimately passed, as you see referenced in this motion. If you open up Public Chapter 290, the language of that bill that turned into a public chapter and was going through the codification process, it is the one that says you don't rely on a teen pregnancy rate at all, okay? The bill, however, when you read the summaries of the bills that were supposed to have been passed, it looks like, at least through the General Assembly website, what the General Assembly attempted to pass was the one that still only required a policy that's tied to pregnancy rate. I showed this to Jeff Reed because I thought maybe I was losing my mind or had Hawaii on the brain already. And what he told me was that sometimes these errors do happen at a, at the legislator, legislative level. I think that might be true, because this bill should already be in effect. And when you go on LexisNexis, which is the official publisher of our statute, it still only shows the 2012 law. So, what does that mean? It means they're probably at the codification office and with the clerks at the legislator, maybe looking at this and trying to figure out, does it need to be, that language need to be changed and the public chapter be updated? So, what does that mean for you all, right? Two things. You could, this policy right now encompasses what we already do. So, there's no harm in adopting it if we wanted to go ahead and do it. So, if it turns out that the bill language is proper and we're supposed to have one, we have one. Or, you can hold it. And I don't think that there will be any harm to us not having it in time, especially in light of this error. So, you could remove it from the agenda and table it if you'd like, and we can see how that shakes out. Or, you can adopt it as a backstop, and if it's for some reason we need to modify it, we can bring that to our October Policy Committee. So, I think we're okay, either way you'd like to go. Sometimes it's nice to be right. It will be Public Chapter 290, whatever, but just what does 290 need to say? We'll have to see. So, there you go. I learned a lot. It was very interesting.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
And I don't know, Mr. Reed, you can tell me if it's appropriate at this point to make a motion, but if it is, I'd like to make a motion that we table, carve out this policy and table it until we can understand more about the legislator's intent, and that all of us as board members can understand perhaps more about the policy and the intent and everything and what we're teaching in and of itself before we vote on it, especially with Ms. Page indicating that it shouldn't be a concern, that it isn't necessarily in place at the beginning of the school year. Would you concur with that, Mr. Reed?
You can add that to the motion.
Okay. But also, would you concur that it won't really impact us, at least before the next board meeting, that we would have time to make a decision?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So, I would make that motion.
Do we have a second? Ms. Maxwell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, since we completed these, then is there a motion? Recommend motion to approve all of the first and final reading, with the exception of the one was tabled, policy 4.213.
If I may, Mr. Spurlock, just because this is first and final reading, we would need a preliminary motion to suspend policy 1600.
Ma'am.
Thank you.
We need a motion to suspend. Do we have a motion?
I move.
Ms. Maxwell, do we have a second? Mr. Estes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the previous recommend motion to approve those on first and final reading, with the exception of the one aforementioned.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
All right. Ms. Maxwell, Mr. Estes, you second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number three.
Okay. Number three, policy adoption, first reading, first reading of two readings. The below policies are recommended on the first reading. These policies will be brought to the next scheduled regular board meeting for second and final reading. Policy 4.406, use of Internet. Policy 4.406, excuse me, policy 4.700, testing programs. Policy 5.200, separation of practices for tenured teachers. Policy 5.201, separation of practices for non-tenured teachers. Policy 6.300, code of conduct. F, policy 6.306, interference, disruption of school activities. G, policy 6.4081, safe relocation of students. H, policy 1.2021, boardsmanship code of conduct. I, policy 1.900, charter school authorizing principles. J, policy 1.902, charter school agreements. K, policy 1.903, charter school oversight. L, policy 1.904, charter school intervention. M, policy 1.905, charter school renewal. N, policy 1.906, charter school revocation. And O, policy 6.202, homeschools. Recommend approval motion to approve the policies in first reading as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Second. Ms. Maxwell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 10.
All right, number 10, our 2020, 2021 summer tenure recommendation. The following teachers meet the criteria for tenure in accordance with a new tenure law. Holds a valid Tennessee teaching license, has served Rutherford County Schools for five years, 45 months within a seven-year period, with the last two years in a regular, not an interim position. Has demonstrated an overall performance of above expectations, or significantly above expectation on the team evaluation during the last two consecutive years of a five-year period, or if held tenure under the previous guidelines and return to Rutherford County Schools, excuse me, and meets the two-year probationary period, then tenure is reactivated. Motion to approve recommendation of the director of schools to tenure to the above-mentioned teachers in criteria for 2020, 2021 as presented.
All right. Any questions? Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Ms. Hart, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Number 11, courses offered for credit in grades 9 and 12 for the 2021, 2022 school year. The instruction department is requesting permission to offer the courses listed in the attachment for 2021, 2022 school year under the following guidelines. Board of Education Policy 4.201 states in part, a listing of courses offered for credit in grades 9 through 12 will be approved by the board annually. Recommend motion to approve the 2021, 22, 22 course offering list for Rutherford County High Schools as presented.
Any discussion? Here and done. Do we have a motion?
We have to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second? Ms. Maxwell, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Number 12.
All right. The first thing we would ask if there's any more questions by the board over the presentation that was presented last night with rethink charter school application?
We are voting on it tonight, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Spurlock, or someone else. I mean, there were a lot of concerns, obviously, that came up expressed last night, especially from a financial standpoint, and I think a readiness standpoint, too. And I understand that we as a board have a right to turn down their application. I guess I'm just curious because I know, of course, the state has certain guidelines that they're giving us to. Mr. Sullivan's nodding his head. This might be a Mr. Sullivan question. And that we already received some pushback from the state. I guess maybe that would be a way to put it correctly, if I'm wrong, on the first go-round, because we indicated that we had problems and concerns with the application, I guess. And you may not even be able to answer this question, but just kind of questioning what the anticipation would be as far as reaction goes, I guess, from the charter school itself, and also possibly from the State Department of Ed, if the vote, if the board were to vote to reject this application this evening, if anybody can speak to that, if it's gonna, what kind of headaches or concerns it might present?
The State Department does not have any authority of this. This would go to our Charter Commission for an appeal. So, the board has the right to turn it down. The Charter Commission would take it up and decide whether or not that the determination as to why it was denied was acceptable.
Who is the Charter Commission made up of? I know I should...
It does have one, at least one member of the State Board of Education.
They're all appointed to that board, I believe.
By the governor?
Yes, it is a brand-new that went into effect this year. It used to be the State Board of Education that had that authority. Now it's the Tennessee Charter.
Right. Okay. But they're all appointees?
I believe so. I'd have to look, but I don't believe it's anything but an appointee.
Thank you.
We do have two resolutions here, one to accept, one to decline. And Mr. Reed can walk us through those two resolutions.
The statute requires the board take action on this by resolution. That's something we don't always do with respect to the various actions we take. So, you do have, so I've drafted two resolutions. One basically grant, approving the charter school, and one denying the charter school. So, I'll read through those. So, the board, depending on what the bill of the board is, you can act accordingly. If we, if the application is denied, you, the board does have to cite reasons for the denial. So, I have, based on the reports that we had last night, we pulled the comments from the review committee and plugged those in the reasons for denial, but those are not locked in stone. So, if the board does not like some of those, we can pull those out, and we don't have to adopt those, and we change this proposed resolution, denying it. But we do have to cite reasons for the denial if the board does deny it. If there are additional reasons that the board wants to deny the application, we can add those to the resolution, too, should we need to do that. And I'll also note that in the event the application is denied, the charter applicant does have a 30-day period to come back to the board and try to redress any kind of deficiencies in their application, and present that back to the board again before it goes on to the appeal process at the Charter Commission. So, there may be one more chance you have had to look at this before it goes on to the Charter Commission, depending on what they do in reaction to what happens tonight. So, having said that, I mean, you have two resolutions before you. You have one resolution, which is approving Rethink Forward's application for charter school, Rutherford Collegiate Prep is the name of their school. I'll read this to you, so you know what it says, and we'll do likewise with the one denying it. It says, whereas the Tennessee Public Charter Schools Act, TCA Section 49-13-101 et sec, establishes the process for charter schools, and whereas TCA Section 49-13-108 provides that local boards of education shall rule by resolution on whether to approve or deny our charter school application, and whereas at its July 22nd, 2021 board meeting, the Rutherford County Board of Education considered Rethink Forward Inc.'s applicant charter school application for Rutherford Collegiate Prep, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education voted to approve the applicant's charter school application, and now therefore be it resolved by the vote of the board members with X votes in favor and X votes against, that the Rutherford County Board of Education approved the charter applications submitted by applicant, and has resolved to enter into a charter agreement with applicant incorporating the terms and conditions set forth in applicant's application. So, that is a one possible resolution. So, they're approving it. You also have a second possible resolution, which is the resolution of the Rutherford County Board of Education denying the application. And what this states is, whereas the Tennessee Public School Charter Schools Act, TCA Section 49-13-101 et sec, establishes the process for the formation of charter schools, and whereas TCA Section 49-13-108 provides that local boards of education shall rule by resolution to approve or deny our charter school application, and whereas at its July 22nd, 2021 board meeting, the Rutherford County Board of Education considered Rethink Forward Inc.'s applicant charter school application for Rutherford Collegiate Prep. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved by vote of the Rutherford County Board of Education, the applicant Rethink Forward Inc.'s application to form, Rutherford Collegiate Prep is hereby denied. The grounds for the denial are as follows, and these are the ones that are subject to board changing, adding to, deleting, whatever you want. These are just kind of what the review committee had cited. But first, in section A there, it says, "The board adopts the findings of the Charter Review Committee, which are incorporated by reference as if stated verbatim herein, and attached heretofore is Exhibit A." And then we have attached the findings that you heard last night from the report as Exhibit A. B, additionally, the board finds that the application does not meet or exceed the standards of the Tennessee Department of Education's application scoring rubric, specifically none of the three applicable portions of the application, the academic plan, the operations plan, or the financial plan, meet or exceed the Tennessee Department of Education standards. C, applicant fails to meet the criteria set forth in Tennessee State Board of Education's quality authorization standards found in Tennessee State Board of Education Policy Number 6.111. Applicant's application fails to meet or exceed the standard in each category of the state of Tennessee scoring rubric related to the quality authorization standard of the academic plan, the operations plan, and the financial plan. To meet or exceed the standard, applicant's responses must be characterized as follows. The response reflects a thorough understanding of key issues. It clearly aligns with the mission and vision of the school. The response includes specific and accurate information that shows thorough preparation. Additionally, applicant has failed to meet the requirements of said authorizing standards for the following reasons. You have I, applicant's mission statement does not indicate in measurable terms what the school intends to do, for whom, and to what degree. Two, applicant has presented no evidence demonstrating community support, with no local letters of support being submitted, and no letters of support from parents, teachers, or community members. Three, applicant has not presented a solvent and sustainable budget and contingency financial plan. Four, applicant has not provided clear evidence of applicant's capacity to execute his plan successfully. Based upon the Rutherford County School System's current transportation system, three buses will be insufficient for the applicant's proposed enrollment of approximately 700 students enrolled from across the county. The plan does not address transportation of students with special needs and the impact such special needs transportation will have on the proposed budget. The lack of transportation could act as a boundary to families of poverty who do not live within the transportation boundaries identified by the application. Further, applicant has not included any building or architect drawings to review the proposed building with flexible partition walls, with no statement regarding whether said walls will be soundproof. D, the board further finds that applicant's proposed school will have a substantial negative physical impact on the Rutherford County School System by virtue of the applicant's plan, requiring immediate funding from the county school system to stay solvent, and may require additional funds on an emergency basis if enrollment does not materialize quickly at the beginning of the school year as budgeted, which creates uncertainty for the budget the Rutherford County School System has for its existing schools. Further, funding the charter school would divert $4,804,340 away from the Rutherford County School System on a recurring annual basis during a time where the school system is funding rapid growth and is in high demand of fiscal funds. This would result in a substantial negative impact on the other students in the school system and the system as a whole. So, again, you know, with respect to the reasons for the denial, that's up to the board's discretion. So, the board should decide whether or not these reasons are the ones the board wishes to rely upon in denying the application, should the board decide to go that route. If there are additional things that you want to cite, there are additional reasons that could be cited if there is a denial. If there is things you would want to, if there are things you want to change, that you don't like some of these reasons here, or you don't believe any of, some of these reasons cited are really supported by the facts that were presented to you, you can strike those, or we can remove those. So, it's within the board's discretion to decide which, if any, of these elements that are in this draft resolution, the board wants to adopt as its resolution. So, with that, you have two resolutions before you. You have a resolution approving the charter school application, and you also have a resolution denying the charter, charter school application. So, if the board wants to take action either way, the motion should be a motion either to approve or deny, and to also adopt the corresponding resolution that goes with approval or denial, or make any other changes you want to make with respect to either resolution. So, those are the options before the board.
Any other questions or discussion?
I have a few. So, Mr. Reed, if I understand correctly, if the board votes to deny the application, we need to either acknowledge the reasons that were there the first time and/or take away and, or add to them, correct?
Correct, yes.
Dr. Sullivan, you led the committee that recent, that did all of this, right? Looking through that report and presentation the other night, it was a huge amount of work. It kind of blew my mind, so to speak, the rubric and all the things that had to be looked at. So, kudos to everybody on that committee, because that was no easy task. I think I know the answer to this, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but based on the feedback we got from that report, it would be my assumption that, well, I shouldn't use the word assume, but would you be willing to say that the committee itself would not vote to accept this charter school application? Is that a safe... Is that a safe bet?
Based on the scoring, yes, that would be our assumption. If we would have scored them at expectations, then that would have been our recommendation for at expectations.
What I thought, I was just looking for some suggestions, thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to the night. I was gonna move to the night.
I'll second Mr. Estes' motion.
All right, Mr. Estes made the motion, Ms. Moore second. All, well, we probably need to do a roll call here.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Maxwell?
Yes.
Yes.
You do have to act by resolution as well, so you have to have a motion either to adopt, you have to have a motion to adopt one of these resolutions. So you'd be, a resolution to adopt the denial of the application would be what the board would need to do.
Okay.
And if there's reasons, again, that you want to cite different reasons for the denial other than what is in this draft resolution, that is an option you have. So just want to remind you that.
Reed, and I don't want to drag this out, but I do think this is an important, a critical enough vote. Can you run that through with us, the reasons for denial the first time?
Sure.
Just to make sure that there is anything we want to add to it.
So the grounds for the denial are as follows. The board adopts the findings of the Charter Review Committee, which are incorporated by reference as if stated verbatim herein, and attached heretofore as Exhibit A. The report that was reviewed by Dr. Sullivan last night is attached as the report is exhibit to this. B, additionally, the board finds that application does not meet or exceed the standards of the Tennessee Department of Education's application scoring rubric. Specifically, none of the three applicable portions of the application, the academic plan, the operations plan, or the financial plan, meet or exceed the Tennessee Department of Education standards. C, applicant fails to meet the criteria set forth in the Tennessee State Board of Education's quality authorization standards found in Tennessee State Board of Education Policy Number 6.111. Applicant's application fails to meet or exceed the standard in each category of the state of Tennessee's scoring rubric related to the quality authorizing standard of the academic plan, the operations plan, and the financial plan. To meet or exceed the standard of application, applicant's responses must be characterized as follows. The response reflects a thorough understanding of key issues. It clearly aligns with the mission and the vision of the school. The response includes specific and accurate information that shows thorough preparation. Additionally, applicant has failed to meet the requirements of said authorizing standards for the following, following reasons. Applicant's mission statement does not indicate in measurable terms what the school intends to do, for whom, and to what degree. Applicant has presented no evidence demonstrating community support with no local letters of support being submitted and no letters of support from parents, teachers, or community members. Applicant, applicant has not presented a solvent and sustainable budget and contingency financial plan. Applicant has not provided clear evidence of applicant's capacity to execute its plan successfully. Based on the school, Rutherford County School System's current transportation system, three buses will be insufficient for the applicant's proposed enrollment of approximately 700 students enrolled from across the county. The plan does not address transportation of students with special needs and the impact such special needs transportation will have on the proposed budget. The lack of transportation could act as a boundary to families of poverty who do not live within the transportation boundaries identified by the application. Further, applicant has not included any building or architect drawings to review the proposed building with flexible partition walls, with no statement regarding whether said walls will be soundproof. The board further finds that the applicant's proposed school will have a substantial negative physical impact on the Rutherford County School System by virtue of the applicant's plan requiring immediate funding from the county school system to stay solvent and may require additional funds on an emergency basis if enrollment does not materialize quickly at the beginning of the school year as budgeted, which creates uncertainty for the budget the Rutherford County School System has for its existing schools. Further, funding the school would divert $4,804,340 away from the Rutherford County School System on a recurring annual basis during a time where the school system is funding rapid growth and is high demand of fiscal funds. This will, this would result in a substantial negative impact on the other students in the school system and the system as a whole. So again, those are, are things that were found by the committee to be, concerns that they had with regard to the application. The board does not have to adopt any of these reasons here. You can adopt your own, or add to this, or delete any of these. But if you, for the, to support the denial, the board does have to cite the reasons for the denial of the application.
But these were the findings of the committee based on the renewed application, correct? Not the original one then? So...
That is the original application. The letter from the commissioner was asking us to view it as complete, not missing some of those other sections. So this is still the original application.
My other question would be for Mr. Bowdery then, because, and obviously, I mean, I think we're all pretty well in agreement. There are a lot of concerns, but from the financial ones, especially that you went over in excruciating detail last night. In your opinion, does this resolution sufficiently cover and articulate the concerns about this charter school from their ability or inability, whichever the case might be, to financially support this school?
Yes, ma'am, I, I agree, I agree with Mr. Reed, and yes, it's, it's sufficient, I believe, to convey, you know, in a nutshell, there are a lot of, a lot of concerns with their fiscal accountability. And of course, the, the, one of the big things was the liquidity issue. It, it, you know, it's, it's very, it was just very frightening to see something with that low of cash, you know, trying to open up something of that size.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to accept the resolution as is with these comments? Ms. Maxwell, Ms. Johnson?
I'll just clarify for that, so motion to deny is...
Ms. Hopkins, you want to call, row?
Ms. Maxwell? Excuse me, yes. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes, motion passes. All right, thank you, guys. I know this has been a lot of work on several people in our central office, and shame we had to spend time on these kind of things. Hopefully, something good will come from it. Number 13.
Number 13, Imagine Learning, found on Tab 5. The Instruction Department is requesting purchase Imagine Learning, an online personalized learning system developed to help students acquire, develop, and strengthen language skills necessary to fully participate in academic setting and prepare for college and career readiness. The cost for Imagine Learning for the 2021-2022 school year is $127.50 per student and will be funded through our federal Title I, Title III, Title IV, and IDA funds. Recommend motion to approve the funding for Imagine Learning for $127.50 per student through our federal funds in Title I, Title III, Title IV, and IDA funds for the 2021-2022 school year as presented. Let me count it for the new board members talking about when we spend federal money, there's a lot of oversight when we use federal money. So just making sure that there, there's more accountability with federal money than there are state and our local money.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I have, Dr. Sullivan, this particular software platform, I tried to get into it and couldn't. I guess it's password protected. Based on all the concerns that are out there right now, with what we've discussed before about curriculum and prohibited curriculum to be taught, and so on and so forth. You know, I have a concern about approving any type of platform or curriculum. Any longer you know my position on that. And I understand, again, that we're taking the position that we'll make sure that our teachers don't, don't teach those things. But I guess my question for you would be, what kind of review's been done on this platform? And what kind of assurances to the board, does the board have that we don't have any CRT and other type-related issues in this particular platform?
This one is used largely for intervention. So this actual motion here is for Laverne Lake. It's 200 students. Out of there, title funding is where this one is coming from. We are meeting with all interventionists next, not next Friday, August 6th, from 8:00 to 3:00 to discuss the trainings that we have for them and the curriculum that they are to use for progress monitoring and those type of things. Just before this board meeting, we had 300 teachers of 6 through 12, and one of the information that I covered with them was following the curriculum guide, not teaching curriculum they're not to, and to follow every resource that we have available for them. And if they come across anything, to make sure that we're aware of it with our Instruction Department. So after I led that, we then broke into our smaller groups, social studies, had our social studies specialists, leaving that exact same discussion.
So the message being sent to those teachers is clear and strong in your opinion about the CRT issue?
It is, we've talked to principals, we've talked to coaches, we've talked to teachers, and we'll continue to... One of the good things I like to say is, when you feel like you're a broken record saying the same thing over and over again, that's when it's, that's when you know that you've started to say something enough. And I feel like we're starting to upset it enough that it feels like a broken record.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We have had this program for how many years now?
In Rutherford County, I have no doubt, I know that I used it as a title principle in a previous county. It's been years, use it for progress monitoring to check skills.
And, and we've had that same conversation for our principals also, so thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, do we have a second? Estes, all in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion passes, number 14.
All right, number 14, Fine Arts, found on Tab 6. Smart Music Music Learning and Assessment System. Instruction Department is requesting purchase Smart Music Platform access for make music for instrumental music teachers and students enrolled in middle and high school instrumental music courses for the 2021-2022 school year. Continued access will provide enhanced curriculum and assessment support for middle and high school instrumental programs. Recommend motion to approve, excuse me, the purchase of Smart Music for instrumental music programs for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $38,173.55 as presented.
Any questions?
I just have one question. Is this going to be available to all of our middle school and high schools, not just three or four that want to use it?
It is, this was one of the things we did last year with distance learning, was that this became something, instead of our Fine Arts people trying to use a, a bound textbook for Fine Arts, this was something they were able to utilize.
I'm not mistaken, I believe this is something that Mr. Lynn used at Stewart's Creek when my son was there. And it is a phenomenal software package, because they can practice at home with a microphone and their instrument, so...
It's just a connection to what is already adopted for our adopted textbooks in Fine Arts. This is just kind of the, the online portion, if you will.
That's wonderful, okay.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, do we have a second? Oh, Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
Second, I didn't hear you.
Sorry.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
All right, next, Quaver Music, Elementary Music Curriculum. Instruction Department is requesting purchase Quaver Music Program for Quaver Ed for all RCS elementary schools for the 2021-2022 school year. This is the district's currently adopted elementary music curriculum. Access for all schools will ensure quality curriculum alignment throughout the district. Recommend motion to approve the purchase of Quaver Music for the 2021-22 school year at a cost of $40,560 as presented.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, do we have a second? Mr. Estes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
All right, next is Art Education Visual Art Instruction Resources. Instruction Department is requesting purchase subscriptions for Curriculum Suite from the Art Education University for visual art teachers for the 2021-2022 school year. Each subscription provides the teacher with the access to customizable instrumental resources and content-specific on-demand PD. Recommend motion to approve the purchase of Art Education Curriculum Suite for all visual art teachers for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $46,143 as presented.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion passes.
All right, next is Drama Teacher Academy Theater Instructional Resources. Instruction Department is requesting to purchase Drama Teacher Academy access for full-time middle and high school theater teachers for the 2021-22 school year. The access includes high-quality, content-specific instructional resources for theater courses. Access for all schools with curriculum during the day. Theater program will ensure equity and access to quality instructional resources throughout the district. Recommend motion to approve the purchase of Drama Teacher Academy for Theater Folk LTD for Teachers for Curriculum Theater Program for the 2021-2022 school year at a cost of $7,170 as presented.
Okay, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, Ms. Johnson, second. All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion passes, number 15.
All right, number 15, Special Education Contract, found on Tab 7, excuse me, License Agreement, Lexia. This agreement is to purchase reading intervention student license and tradings, training to address students with disability with deficits in reading. The district plans to purchase 1,600 student license with the training and support. The cost should not exceed $57,900 to be paid with IDA Part B Special Education Funds. Recommend motion to approve the purchase of Lexia Student License and Training, not to exceed $57,900 to be paid with IDA Part B Special Education Funds as presented.
Any questions from the board? Hear none, do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, do we have a second? Mr. Estes? All in favor, say aye. Any oppose? Motion passes.
All right, next is a License and Service Agreement for Insights and Behavior Software. This agreement is for district site license for behavior intervention software, which includes training modules for staff, behavioral tracking data collection tools, and software to assist teachers and staff in documentation required for behavior intervention for students at a cost of $97,500 using transfer-out funds budgeted through the IDA Part B of the Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services. Recommend post, uh, motion to approve the License and Service Agreement for Insights into Behavior Software District License to address disproportionality of discipline for students with special needs using transfer-out funds budgeted through the IDA Part B of the CCEIES, not to exceed $97,500 for the 2021-2022 school year.
All right, any questions? Do we have a motion?
I speak to the Behavioral Tracking Data Collection section of that.
It's like the RTIB, the tiers, as they hit their particular number or, or incidence, then they either go up a tier and they, and involves other intervention, or else they actually stay there. The whole purpose is to get them back to, to track this before we make any decisions on, you know, on, on any of it.
I, I, I'm hoping then that nobody outside the school system has access to that data.
No, that's, uh, that's, no one.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson, do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Maxwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, financial matters on tab eight, approved school activity fund auditor contract. The last fiscal year, the purchasing of the department solicited proposal for contract to school activity fund audit.
Did we skip one?
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, Special Kids, contractual agreement with Special Kids. This contract with Special Kids, Inc. is for special education-related and nursing services. These services provide speech and language occupational therapy, physical therapy, and nursing services to the Rutherford County School students in Special Kids facilities. Hourly rates are, for therapy, are $80 per hour. Daily rates for nursing services are $175 per hour. The total cost not to exceed $25,000 during the 2021-22 school year, and it will be paid from IDA Part B of Special Education Funds. Recommend motion to approve this contractual agreement with Special Kids, Inc. Not to exceed $25,000 during the 2021-2022 school year, and will be paid from GP, the General Purpose Special Education Funds as presented.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. Ms. Moore, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number 16.
All right, number 16, the financial matters on tab eight, approved school activity fund auditor contract. Last fiscal year, the purchasing department solicited proposals for the contract to school activity fund audit, and the school board approved engaging the audit firm Matlock Clements CPAs for the annual financial and compliance audit of school activity funds for the fiscal year 2020-2021. This contract has an option to renew for another four additional fiscal years at the board's discretion. Annual audit cost for renewal option for the fiscal year 2021-2022 is $64,218, and the amount reflects the addition of Plainview Elementary's activity funds to audit field work. Funding for this audit is already budgeted in our original 2021-2022 general purpose school fund budget. Recommend motion to approve the contract option to retain Matlock Clements CPAs as the school activity fund auditors for the fiscal year 2021-2022 as presented.
All right, any discussion? Okay, do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, facilities found on tab nine. Now, these are our three building programs that were, projects that were going to be, we've already been put out to bid, that were approved by the county commission. As you can see, the first was the Rockville Elementary Annex Bid. It came in with a total amount of $12,008,538. So motion to approve Robert S. Biscan Company bid in the amount of $9,510,368 in the total project request of $12,085,368 to Health and Education as presented.
Any questions? Hear none. Do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson, second. Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, the next one is a request for the Rockville Middle School Classroom additions bid. This bid comes in at a total of $9,132,000. And as you can see the breakdown there, motion to approve Robert S. Biscan bid in the total amount of $9,132,000 to Health and Education as presented.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Estes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Smyrna.
All right, the next one is the request for the Smyrna Middle Annex renovation bid. This bid came in at a total of $5,535,000. Recommend motion to send Wright Construction Services the bid for a total amount of $5,535,000 to Health and Education as presented.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Do we have a second? Ms. Maxwell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next one is the Central Magnet Annex HVAC bid. And this one, as Mr. Lee talked about, this had to be rebid. Go back out for bid because of the Davis Bacon Act, because we were using SR2 funds. As you can see there, purchasing engineering construction received bids for the renovation of the Annex HVAC bids. These bids have been reviewed, and engineering instruction recommends Four Seasons Incorporated base bid of $895,000 to be funded utilizing SR2 funds. Motion to approve the Central Magnet Annex HVAC renovations using SR2 funds at the cost of $895,000 as presented.
Any questions?
Mr. Lee, if we voted to go with the CMT company, would that cover this?
No, sir. This project's already out in front, and that's why we're proposing to use the SR2 funds. The other project is based on this already being completed.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Do we have a second? Estes, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Information only.
All right, the next is the, was there any questions that you had from Mr. Lee? It was just information only from the report last night. I don't think we had any last night.
I don't have any questions, but I did speak with the gentleman before I left, and I don't know if any other board members would like to meet with him and maybe see one or two of the other locations that they have, some of the other work that they've done. I don't know if there's an interest. Does anybody have an interest in that?
What locations would that be?
I don't know what locations they've done, but he said he offered to do that.
Most of them are in Kentucky?
Oh, well.
I'll be glad to provide the documents from there, like they did this report. We can provide their, I can request their prior report and their post-report so that you can, they can show that their product produces what they say.
He didn't say Kentucky, so I thought it might be something local, Davidson County, maybe.
If there are questions, I think we're planning at the next board meeting to bring this up for a vote. So if you have questions between now and then, please reach out to me and let me know what they are so I can answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. AT&amp;T Cell Tower request.
Yeah, AT&amp;T Cell Tower request. AT&amp;T, through its agent Mas-Tech, has provided drawing and easement paperwork to allow installation of the new cell tower to improve the cell service in the downtown area of Murfreesboro. Engineering and Construction has discussed this request. Murfreesboro City Planning, and they either want you to approve or disapprove of this request. And I think Mr. Lee may have said leaning on the disapproved side. So there's a recommend motion to whether approve this or disapprove this easement. And keep in mind, this was similar to the Stewart Creek one. The only difference is that this falls into the current utility easements along Main Street.
All right. Do we have any questions or discussion? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to disapprove the request for that easement. A second.
Disapprove. Ms. Moore, do we have a second? Ms. Sharp, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right, next is the, just for information only, I think Mr. Lee included pictures there. We do appreciate the Eagle Scout here taking care of this situation. And as we mentioned before, we always get a lot out of this, and we're very thankful for that.
Any other comments? All right, number 18, insurance update.
Okay, Mr. Bodder is going to be sending you Cigna's annual report that we received today. Also, insurance said that they would be giving us some dates in the next two weeks of opening enrollment and the Fall Wellness Fair.
Any questions on insurance? All right, number 19, directors update.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, we had a great meeting today with all of our principals. It was good to have them all together. It's Segal High School hosting it in the auditorium. Everyone had the opportunity to learn new different things that we've provided to them that has occurred recently. We also had a chance to go out to our camp that Ms. Matthews was hosting, me and Mr. Evans. And we actually found someone out there that could actually imitate Mr. Evans. I actually got it on video.
We found my replacement today, so whenever you're ready, just let me know.
Yeah. So that was, that was great. Now, the next thing is, we want to go over a few things that we'll be releasing on Monday. First of all, masks in Rutherford County schools are an option only. And I need to read a few things here as far as administrative procedures. The authority to quarantine individuals related to COVID-19 lies with the Rutherford County Health Department. That is given to them through the United States Health Department, quite frankly. We're looking at these, and we're making some modifications with the caveat of the following. If any individual is given instructions by the federal, state, or local health department, the health department's instructions supersede our procedures. All right, a contact person, according to our definition that we've taken, is any person who has been in close proximity of less than six feet when the infected person, with the infected person for 15 minutes cumulative or more, for more than a 24-hour period. Now, there's the change that we made. Last year, it was 48 hours. So we're using one day with the understanding that if the local health department, the feds or whatever, comes back in, they can make us change that. All right, contacts are only quarantined if the person suspected of COVID-19 is confirmed. All right, only other way that they can be quarantined is if an official from those health departments says it's a probable case. Okay, any questions on that part? Okay, let's move on over then. Let's talk a little bit about how many days are we talking about? All right, whether it be student or staff that gets caught up in what we referenced as contact tracing, they have some things here that can get them out of it. Number one, and we don't require any note, any kind of, if we ask them, have you been vaccinated, they say yes, we go on and we just let them stay. If not, then they will, they will, they will, excuse me, they will quarantine for a time of seven days. And on the seventh day, if they are not exhibiting any symptoms, they can come back. So that's just the quarantine part. If they're testing positive, we still have that seven-day window. At the anytime between that, if they want to get, especially staff member, if they want to get some kind of rapid test, they can come back, our staff members. All right, if not, at the somewhere on, after that sixth day, on the seventh day, if they're no longer exhibiting symptoms and they've had, been proven to have COVID, then they can come back. One of the things that we will be, will be leaving our vernacular this year, there will not be something called distance learning. It will be virtual opportunities. Depending on whether it's, whether it's a person or a student that has actually contracted COVID, will be determined if we put them in virtual school, our virtual school, or if they need virtual opportunities. Okay? All right, last thing concerning that, we are not requiring any vaccines. We do not ask anyone, whether it's our staff or any people in our schools, whether they've been vaccinated or not. We will still continue to social distance as we were able to. We have not, we're not requiring masks on the bus. If you want to wear a mask on the bus, that's your option. Am I leaving anything out, Dr. Anthony? Okay. Are there any questions about that?
This is a brand-new procedure.
It is a procedure. Yes, it's a modified procedure.
I assume this will be something that the board will vote on, correct?
This is, this, I have the autonomy to do this under, under the policy. It's been, it's been looked over by our staff attorney.
But not by the board?
Well, if I have the autonomy to do it, I'm giving you the opportunity to see it. Now, one of the things we got to understand, there's this thing called gross negligence. If we would not have anything, and quite frankly, it does go back to the local health department. If we did not put anything in writing in terms of how we would address mitigating the spread of the virus, it would open this board up to litigation and excessive liabilities. So what we're attempting to do, we've, let, make it be known, we want our kids in school. We're going to be held accountable this year. There's not going to be no held harmless and any of that stuff here. We want our kids in school so they can learn. Our attempt is to modify this thing so that we don't have them out as long. Now, in a perfect world, we hope we don't have, use the policy, or use the administrative procedure.
Any other questions, discussion?
If we quarantine a teacher, are they on their own sick time or?
There's, where we talked that through. Dr. Anthony, you want to go over that, that part of it?
Yes, if they have COVID, then they use their sick days. If there are other sick days and they're a member of the sick bank, then they can apply for sick bank days. At that point, once they run out of those allotted days, many of our employees have short-term disability. They can talk to our risk management team that can help them, you know, find that policy that they have. So we have several steps for them to be able to go through.
You know, that's isolation. Now, quarantine would be the same thing. If, if we asked them, have you been vaccinated, they said yes, we wouldn't do anything. If not, they would go for seven, seven days. On the seventh day, if, after the sixth day, if they had no symptoms whatsoever, they would just come back to school. Now, we did get into something, and HR will be working with our staff in terms of, did it occur as a result of a student or another, a faculty member or staff member who tested positive? Is that correct? Okay.
Any other questions? All right, number 21, FRN, Ms. Johnson? All right, general discussion.
Mr. Chair, there's a lady in the audience that would like to ask a question.
I know you were talking about asking about vaccination status. I know you're not trying to ask for anyone to show proof. My question is, is whether you'll ask if someone has recovered from COVID? My question is, is whether you'll ask if someone has recovered from COVID? Because that also is...
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize. That is in there. There is, it's in there if, you know, they have had COVID and the policy, I mean, the administrator reads that there are ninety, after ninety, I think it's ninety days that they're immune.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion?
I was wanting to ask if there is any chance about the waiver process? The window has closed, from what I understand. Is there any way we could?
What now?
The waiver for rezoning for schools, I think that, isn't that over?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Is there any way, due to extreme circumstances at Rockville, that we could get the word out that it is open and allow some parents to go ahead and ask for a waiver to come back to Riverdale, especially if they think they're going to be in the rezoning anyhow?
Actually, you know, in the rezoning, and keep in mind, when you look at Riverdale, there, you're over 1,900 kids right now. All right, when we rezone, we're going to, what we're going to do is we're going to actually, looking at it so that we can do it over time. If we, if we try to rezone some certain parts, or we open it up for rezoning, we're going to end up having overcrowdedness at Riverdale and overcrowdedness at Rockville. So, our, so our plan is that we, and we started on this, I guess it was back last spring, and we'll be bringing it forward this fall, is looking at the area, I think it may be close to where Dr. Sullivan lives down in that area. But the eighth graders there now, some, a lot of the eighth graders in this area that we're talking about, I don't know if it's exactly his neighborhood, will be going to Riverdale in the 2022-2023 school year. So, over time, it's going to take a siphon off that part, and it's, and we'll show you what it looks like over time.
Well, there, I was talking to, I mean, this may be, James Evans explained it. They will be able to, if they are not rezoned, they have to go on to Rockville this year. But next year, if they, their neighborhood is rezoned, they will have the opportunity to leave Rockville and go to Riverdale.
We really can't do that because what will happen with us doing the rezoning of the eighth graders and throwing some in, what could potentially put Riverdale overcrowded. You know, one of the things we've got to do first is look and see what growth looks like when we come back, you know, at the beginning, like here in August. Usually, we get some true numbers somewhere toward the end of August so that we can determine how many, you know, how many are actually in the school. We get the information, but sometimes you have duplicates. Sometimes you have some no-shows. And when we purge all that out of there, then we know what that enrollment looks like. It's going to be very difficult for us to extract some out of Rockville High School and move them to Riverdale if, you know, because it can make Riverdale overcrowded very quickly.
Mr. Spurlock, what Ms. Maxwell had asked me before the meeting, if I understood you correctly, was about athletic eligibility. Is that what you were asking me about? So, what she had asked me earlier was that if a child goes in August this year and is a freshman and plays a sport, and then we rezone them next year, would they be eligible? And my understanding is, yes, they would be, because we rezone them, not of their choice, but of our choice.
Right.
And so, that, that will not affect eligibility. If they move, then they have to sit out a year if they have an athletic record. If we move them, they don't have to sit out a year. That's a T double S double A rule.
Right, that's correct.
All right. Well, we're ready to start a new school year. The summers went by fast, and I hope we get off to a lot better start than we did last year. All right, nothing else, we are adjourned.